All set, Mayor.
Ginny, Jimmy?
All set, Mayor.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor Kent?
Here.
Counselor Genatino?
Here.
Counselor Cuddy?
Here.
Counselor LaCastro?
Here.
Mayor Quill?
Here. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as our own. And you remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Clerk, public announcements, if any?
Thanks, Mayor. We do have a couple of announcements this evening. The first is that there will be a planning board meeting next week here at City Hall on Tuesday, January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, six thirty P. M. here in council chambers at Memorial City Hall. This is the January meeting for the planning board. Earlier this month, their meeting had to be canceled because they weren't able to get a quorum of members at the meeting. So this meeting is next week at City Hall. And then next week also, we have the next regular meeting for the nuisance abatement committee. And the nuisance abatement committee will hold its meeting nine A. M. on Wednesday, January nineteenth, and that meeting will be held here in council chambers at City Hall as well.
Do we have one proclamation?
Yep. Sure will. Proclamation tonight from the Office of Mayor, Michael D. Quill, whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union. And whereas the King Holiday and Service Act enacted in nineteen ninety-four, designated the King Holiday as a national day of volunteer service, and charged the Corporation for National Community Service with leading the effort. Whereas since nineteen ninety-four, millions of Americans have been inspired by the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King to serve their neighbors and communities on the King Holiday. Whereas serving on the King Holiday is an appropriate way to honor Dr. King, meet local and national needs, bring our citizens together, and strengthen our communities and nation. Whereas the King Day of Service is the only federal holiday commemorated as a national day of service and offers an opportunity for Americans to give back to their communities on the holiday and make an ongoing commitment to service throughout the year. And whereas the King Day of Service theme this year is it starts with me, it calls upon us to confront and acknowledge the work as yet to be completed in a way that produces equitable outcomes for all. As King stated, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. We are caught in an inescapable network of mutuality. We must recognize that these injustices suffered by people of all marginalized identities are all intertwined and only benefit the few. By acknowledging the understanding, these connections of these connections, we find that we are all trying to achieve the same dream. And whereas each of us can and must contribute, support, and implement projects to increase economic opportunities, improve education, support veterans and military families, help combat the opioid crisis, and help communities prepare for and recover from disasters. Now therefore, Michael D. Quill, Mayor of the City of Auburn, on behalf of the City Council and citizens of Auburn, hereby proclaims January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, as Martin, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day here in the City of Auburn.
Thank you. And with us, we have Dr. Rhonda Overstreet-Wilson.
Good evening to the mayor and also to city council and community members. Bishop Murray couldn't be here tonight as he is not feeling well and has asked me to accept this proclamation in his stead. On behalf of him and the MLK Committee, we again are deeply honored that the mayor and city council have carved out time in tonight's meeting to acknowledge and honor the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. The city, the council, and the mayor have recognized the important work that the bishop, the MLK Committee, participating churches, and the community members are doing to keep MLK's dream alive. Dr. King didn't get the opportunity to see the strides made to get to the mountaintop, but when we get there, his spirit will meet us. Thank you again.
We'll move along to our first public to be heard.
At this point in time where it will open the public to be heard, portion of the council meeting residents are asked to state their name and address for the record. Please keep remarks to three minutes or less, and please observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy and decor.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone desiring to be heard? Take your time. We'll get everybody here. All right. We will have a second public to be heard at the end of the meeting. Move along to the approval of the meeting minutes of January sixth of this year. We have a sponsor. Counselor Kent, second by Counselor Castro. Discussion, corrections, dilutions. Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carry.
Thank you. Mr. Diger, city manager, report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Throughout last week and this week, quite a few of our city staff have spent considerable time updating our policies related to our response to COVID and as well as how we handle our employment situations related to COVID. I want to mention, as I did last week, that over the last couple of weeks, COVID-related illness has, you know, nearly two years into this, has started to have an impact on our daily operations and our ability to provide service. But I will say this, that I think in almost any sector of life or business, over the last two years, we've seen impacts on the ability of businesses to provide customer service and do those things, whether it's a local restaurant, a retail establishment, a trade, anything like that. But I will say that our city employees have done a tremendous job maintaining a level of service that has not changed in the last two years. We continue to provide the same high-quality level of service throughout this. We've had some challenges over the last couple of weeks. I foresee some continued challenges over the next couple of weeks as we make our way through this. But our departments have adjusted along the way. They've done a very good job of that. They've covered for each other. We still see that continuing today. And I'm thankful that we've got the workforce that we do, that I don't think that, for the most part, anybody in this community could legitimately claim to have seen much of a decrease in the level of service or the amount of service that they perceive. So that's good. We continue to work with East Hill Medical and Kew County Health Department and the hospital, working through these changes. And there have been significant changes over the last couple of weeks related to how we deal with isolation and things like that related to our employees and even the public. We'll continue to do that. Let's see. We've got Chief Slaton here, and his department had some noteworthy activity yesterday. I don't know, Chief, are you able to give a brief update on what was going on with your folks yesterday?
Absolutely. Thank you, city manager, mayor, and council. Yesterday at twelve oh seven P. M., we received a call of a bank robbery in progress at Key Bank, three fifty-five Genesee Street in the west end of Auburn. The subject had passed a note to the teller demanding money. No weapon was displayed at the time. We got there relatively quick. We had a great response time by all the officers and detectives involved. Through video surveillance in the neighborhoods, we secured the area. We determined that the vehicle had left headed in a westerly direction outside the city towards Aurora. With some intel that we received, we had an idea that they may be headed to the Aurora area. We sent units out there. The sheriff's department and the state police were instrumental in helping us with this. They were there on scene and sent some vehicles out there and were able to stop the vehicle in the town of Aurora. Two subjects were arrested and charged with robbery third. And they, today, they were in front of the judge, remanded to the county jail on bail. So currently, they are out, still there. Like I say, lead detective Sean DeRosa did a great job, and then so did the state police and Kew County Sheriff's Department. Do you have any questions on that? Yes, sir.
Were they local people?
One was local, one was not. They do have family in the area.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good job, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Chief. One of the finishing touches for the State Street Corridor Enhancement Project was to actually light the streetlights. I believe that has happened. If it hasn't happened, it will be within the next day or so, and they'll be troubleshooting some lights here and there. But I know I've received some calls on that. You may have also, counsel, as far as when that was going to happen. But they should be functioning now, if not within the next couple of days. I received an update yesterday on our sales tax collections. It was basically our calendar year-end sales tax collections. And without getting into actual, the absolute details of that, it looks as though we had a strong year for sales tax collection in the calendar year two thousand and twenty-one, up over a million dollars in the previous year, and up approximately a million dollars from the year before that. So last year, in two thousand and twenty, we had a little bit of a, of a decrease, slight decrease from two thousand and nineteen, but where we exceed both of those years currently. And we're tracking approximately the same increase, if you look at it from a fiscal year standpoint as well. So strong sales tax collections right now, which is good. You may have noticed in the news, the eviction moratorium will be lifted effective on Saturday, January fifteenth. We are not sure exactly how that's going to impact our housing situation locally, but we're certain that it's going to have an impact on the housing situation locally and on our landlords and the entire housing situation. This is something that we've discussed in the past. It was a concern of our code enforcement department for quite some time, but we never really knew exactly how it was going to work out. There were continued extensions of that eviction moratorium. There's been various approaches by both tenants and property owners to navigate this. And we are aware, and I see Ms. Marinelli's in the audience, and I know she has some concerns, and it's something that I believe is going to have an impact on the community and our housing stock and in our situation of the tenants that reside in many of these buildings. So as we get more information, there are some other programs that the state is discussing, rolling out. We don't have a lot of information on those programs right now. It's pretty dynamic at this point, but our planning department's trying to keep an eye on it. Code enforcement's keeping an eye on it. And I know that Kew County Social Services is concerned about the impact of this as well. So we are working with all of those agencies. We don't have a definitive plan yet because we don't necessarily know exactly what the rules are going to be moving forward, but we are keeping an eye on that. That's about it for now, Mayor.
That's all?
That's it.
Counselor?
Jeff, did you say the lights on State Street?
I may have. I meant South Street. That was what I was talking about.
I was going to ask you. Okay.
Yeah, I may have misspoken.
No problem.
Anyone else? Thank you. Reports from members of the council? Counselor Cuddy, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tuesday, I met with our head of DPW, Mike Talbot, and members from the USTA, United States Tennis Association, along with local tennis teachers, Shelley Connors and Shelley Connor and Jordan Sadowitz, who is at Center, sorry, Champions for Life. We met via Zoom to discuss potential programming over the summer using the public courts that we're so proud of. And the meeting was very, very productive, and the discussions were grant opportunities through the United, through the USTA to fund equipment for young children interested in learning tennis. We talked about utilizing the Casey Park Courts in the evening, certain dates over the summer. So it was just good to see these organizations, non-for-profit organizations, begin to work with the city and expand some programming, tennis programming in our public court. So that was Tuesday. And yesterday, I met with Walt Aikman, and we're still in the, I guess, brainstorming stages of the, what's tentatively called the Auburn Conservation Corps. That, too, we're looking for grant opportunities. But one of the main partners we're going to meet with next would be Kew Anadagabosi's, the Career and Tech Center. And we're looking at modeling it after a program that I was involved in years ago called the Summer Career Connections Camp, which has young middle schoolers learn about certain trades. And this one would be focused on the environment, battling invasive species, planting trees, and learning about the watershed. So I just wanted to, you know, talk to my colleagues here, let them know that both of these meetings were very early-stage meetings, but they're both very much youth-focused and expanding programming for the young people of Auburn and, in the case of, the case of the Auburn Conservation Corps, the surrounding communities as well. Thank you.
Anyone else?
All set, Mayor.
Thank you, everyone. Biosolids update. Mr. Johnson, please. Oh, come back.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Happy New Year. So we're here tonight to provide city council and the public an update on our wastewater treatment plant, biosolids dryer, and improvements project. So we also have Eric Muir with Brown and Caldwell, our consultant, helping us with this project here tonight to give a few more of the, kind of the design details associated with this project. And then next week, we'll be here with a change order to the engineering contract to complete the design services. We're currently under contract with them to do ninety percent design, and we need to take that to a hundred percent and also incorporate some of the other wastewater treatment plant improvements that were adopted in the capital plant. So by way of some background for the public and for council, the wastewater treatment plant is located at thirty-five Bradley Street here in Auburn. Constructed originally back in like the nineteen thirties, there's really been two major capital improvement projects that has transformed the plant into what we know and operate today. One was in seventy-two, and then the most current upgrade was in nineteen ninety-five. And at that point in time, significant upgrades were done. Most of the facilities that are there today were constructed at that point in time, and the city expended about fifty million dollars in the mid-nineties, which in today's dollars is around a ninety-million-dollar project. Almost thirty years later, our current treatment plant process still remains valid. It does a very good job, and it's still an industry standard. However, just about every moving part, gate, motor, the roofs, roofs, have been replaced or need to be replaced. The UV system we replaced a few years ago. All of those components really require replacement or attention. The bones are in very good shape, which is good. Out of the eight million gallons of water that we treat on a daily basis on average, there's really two outputs. And those outputs are either clean water or biosolids. A lot of people call those biosolids sludge and sludge management. And we've been focusing our attention lately, since two thousand and nineteen, on that exact component, the biosolids, and the management of those biosolids. It's part of a, kind of a five-year needs assessment that was conducted back in two thousand and sixteen. City council pushed staff to identify projects, and this was basically number one, along with some other just replacement of existing pumps and motors and things of that nature. It was really the number-one project. So with council's direction, over the last few years, we've been looking into a new and improved way to handle our biosolids. And a lot of that is to get it to a more environmentally-friendly condition, a lower volume condition, and into a condition that we could potentially market, even though marketing isn't in our strategy today. We're contemplating disposal, but nearly seventy-five to eighty percent less tons of sludge disposed of on an annual basis. As you can see from this slide, prices since two thousand and seventeen, roughly around when I started working in this capacity, we're spending about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year on biosolids removal with a, with a biosolids management contract with Casella Organics, hauling those materials over land to Ontario landfill on the other side of Geneva, to the two and three hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. In just four short years, that price has just about doubled. They're really the only service in town. The only other one that we looked into at one point when we were running up against issues with hauling our sludge to Ontario for a few months due to some of their issues that they're having at their landfill at the time. Pricing a couple of years ago for a different type of disposal option was around a hundred and fifty dollars or more than double the cost of our current contract with, with Casella. So, you know, with, with your support and with a lot of staff expertise and guidance to me and to the council, we've come to this point where we're pushing through towards ninety percent design with the hope to get to a hundred percent. And maybe Eric can give us just a little update on where he's at at this point in time.
Sure. Just a brief update on design progress and the facilities that are being touched. Since the last upgrade in the nineties, there's other facilities across the treatment plant in need of repair, and this is kind of a listing of all of those. And those new facilities and the outlines in magenta or purple are all the facilities being touched, either through retrofit activities or through biosolids upgrades. So new electrical entrance gear, new primary scum troughs, sludge thickening, sludge stabilization, sludge drying, dry product storage, and then the aeration system in the top, the northernmost part, that looks like a light brown color, that's the aeration tanks. And then the final settling tanks, which are the larger circles in the middle there. And then finally, the ORF tanks, nineteen twenty-nine vintage, where they're being held together with duct tape at this point. So a lot of tender love and care through, and upgrades of existing facilities, normal plant upgrades that we see going on in other municipalities and other facilities across the state and across the country, just a matter of keeping your wastewater treatment plant facilities up and running. Design progress highlights to date, we're at a ninety percent level for the biosolids improvements. We've gone through quite a few optimization workshops and kind of monitoring other municipalities that are doing this, taking lessons learned and incorporating it. We've done the process modeling throughout the whole, throughout the plant and the secondary system so that we know we'll be able to fit all these bits and pieces together and still meet permit. And DEC has been involved in those discussions. And then we've done the structural inspections of those ORF retention tanks that I was just discussing, and started the design of the electrical infrastructure. That's really the backbone to operating these. The next three slides just kind of show three D. Pictures of some of those facilities. So in the top right-hand corner, that's mostly your existing facilities with just some minor add-ons. And then the two lower pictures show the internal, internals to that building with new process equipment. On the left, a rotary drum thickener, which thickens the biosolids. And then on the right, a pump gallery, which will pump it up to where those thickened biosolids going, it takes about half of the volume out, go up to sludge stabilization. Here are just some three D. Images of those sludge stabilization tanks. And then again, and throughout design and throughout working with Seth and his team, just utilizing all the bits and pieces of existing infrastructure at the site. So that building in the middle is actually an old trickling filter building built in the seventies that will be retrofitted to hold the equipment needed to operate those two sludge stabilization tanks. And those two pictures down below is the pipe galleries internal to that existing building. And then finally, the sludge drying and de-watering building, that's shown in the top right again, and then the internals are shown on the bottom. That big, that blue piece of equipment is the sludge dryer. It's a belt dryer as designed right now. And that's where the final biosolids product will be, will go from like a twenty percent cake to a dried product that's pelletized, and then over to the dried product storage area. That's a quick update on design progress to date.
Pretty interesting stuff. You guys
Sorry.
Barely staying seated over here. So unfortunately, I also come tonight not only with exciting news of our design and where we, where we stand, but just about a week after, or maybe a month or two after, it felt like a week after, we were supported with a thirty-six million dollar bond authorization, which brought our total project to thirty-eight million dollars for For the biosolids dryer and wastewater treatment plant improvements. The industry really saw a twenty-five to thirty percent hit to just about every. Every project that was in in design and going out for construction. So. We do, we do have some bad news, I guess, when it when it comes to our costs that what we're projecting anyways and you just, you never know until you bid. Out the project to know really where you land. But I didn't want to continue down down the path of. This project without at least presenting an update on on costs and some of our estimates. So. For the biosolids work, the you know, the dryer, the sludge stabilization tanks, the the initial project that kind of got. Got things moving at our at our plant as far as choosing a design option to to progress. We have seen those costs increase up to around the forty-one million dollar mark. And then all those other supported projects that kind of work in concert with with biosolids to the aeration tanks, primary clarifiers. The final settling tanks. Basically, every part of this treatment plant is being touched by by this project. Those tally up to to a new project total around fifty fifty-five million dollars. Next slide. So within the bad news, there's still, I think, optimism and good news. Cause when we were here. About this time last year, maybe a little bit later, talking about the thirty-eight million dollar project, we had done a. Deep dive into our financials and taken a good look at our. You know, fiscal outlook with respect to our existing rate and how strong that existing rate would be around. Supporting this project as well as other initiatives. So that fifty-five million dollars that I that I referenced earlier. Just to continue to be conservative, we put a number into our into our rate analysis of fifty-eight million dollars. There's another roughly twenty million dollars in other capital improvement projects that are projected in this rate model as well. And those projects include our CSO upgrades to the facilities, the sewer separation projects and then. Taking a good hard look at I and I across the city of Auburn, especially after what we experienced this past. Summer with high flows in our intercepting sewers. So. It's all in there. And we didn't, we didn't take any of that out and with it all in there. And if we're successful in achieving even just this one grant that we put in for last year, which is a nine million dollar grant. With twenty million and. Low, low no interest rate through ESC. You you can see that our our rate still continues to be strong, at least over the next. Four years to twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, at which point in time, there's a few modest increases to the to the sewer rate. That would be necessary to match. Cost of operations and and things of that nature. Now, again, I I think that this is conservative. This this. Projection is accounting for seventy-seven to eighty million dollars in projects. Of which just a poor, small portion of them are assisted by state grants. Next slide. But even more conservatively, if there's no grants or no loans, which I can't. Think would ever happen. It's it's still to think that we could go through and and. Provide such a significant capital reinvestment in our wastewater treatment plant and our collection system over the next five years and spend almost eighty. Million dollars in that reinvestment strategy with no grant assistance. It's still almost something that we could probably do. Obviously, I think that there's great opportunity in here from the federal government and the infrastructure dollars coming down the pike. I think this is a great project for the state to consider through WEA, which we've already put in for Christina wouldn't. Has spent the time and effort to help me put together that grant application if she didn't think it was a good idea and you know, potentially a good outcome. So I think the picture is still still bright. I think the future is still positive. But the project's bottom line has grown since March. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I I just wanted to make sure that. That the sewer fund is in and of itself sustaining, right? And that this capital improvement, we're gonna, you know. Borrow, but basically based on the rates that you have here, which include the wholesale rate, which is based on. The agreement with towns that this is factored in.
Correct.
Capital project is factored into those rates. So there really shouldn't be any issue with. You know, our neighbors having concerns about the upgrade. I mean, I.
Correct. Yes, and we've talked, we've talked with them too. We meet twice a year. And this project along with the I and I CSO sewer separation projects have been well communicated. In fact, that methodology is built into this. This rate analysis, you can see in twenty twenty-three, the wholesale sewer rate actually goes down. And it goes down because some significant debt service at the wastewater treatment plant that they're paying. Their fair share for is gone. And and over the next three years, their rates are a little bit less because of that methodology that we we laid out and the total plant costs are actually less for a short period of time. Until the debt service of the new project takes full effect, at which you can see it incrementally picks back up to two eighty-nine and three oh-three and so on and so forth for that three-year. Reset. So. It's a it's a methodology that, you know, doesn't discriminate, it's not waived one way or another, it's total cost divided by. Their usage.
It is a side note, there have been upgrades to the metering of the the. The sewer ca- the sewer rates.
Sewer flows?
Sewer flows.
Yes.
To our neighbors and we're have gonna have a more accurate accounting of the flows.
Correct.
So, you know. Before this all started, there's been a lot of work just making sure that everything is done properly and a methodology is agreed upon so that we can do. These kinds of upgrades with the and we can do these forecasts and and planning ahead of time. So. You know, I could understand, you know, people seeing the price tag of this, but given, you know, the. Things we have to do as a city, as a municipality to fulfill, you know, compliance with. You know, with the DEC as well as, you know, save money, the the disposal of sludge, as you had indicated earlier, is much more expensive. Than the biosolids that would be created from this. So, you know. Big price tag, but it it would be much worse if we continued going the way we were, the way we are and. As you had mentioned, there's opportunities with federal funding with the, you know, hopefully the infrastructure. Planning that comes comes through the federal government. So, you know. This, I'm gonna support this because I know that the methodologies are in place, the reasons are there and, you know. This is long-term planning.
Right. Thirty years out. Yep. Yes?
I think I've asked this question before, but it's been a little while. Where is the closest up and running facility? Auburn?
Now it's Endicott and they're just going through the final commissioning. We've been watching them very closely. Toward the facility, we have to go back down again. Once the equipment's fully commissioned. City of Syracuse is in the process of installing the same technology. City of Watertown is considering it. Pennsylvania, there's same technology. And and a few different locations, we've visited them as well. So more and more municipalities of our size, larger and smaller, are implementing the. The dryer technology. Now, all the other technologies, which, you know, I don't wanna necessarily take away from because seventy-five to. Maybe maybe more like eighty percent of this project is investment in or reinvestment in existing technology. And or the sludge stabilization technology, which is industry standard across the board, across the United States and Europe and. The dryer technology is just a small, small portion of that project.
How are you basing your numbers on sludge in ten years? I mean, how you, how are you? Are you going by population? Are you going by what the last ten years have done?
Sludge has been consistent for thirty thirty years from what. Mr. Storrs has told me, I don't know, Tim, if you can talk much historical data as far as. Sludge production goes, but there there's two different, there's two different types of sludge. There's primary, which is just kind of your grit, your floaters, your sinkers that comes in right off the bat that either settles out or floats grease. That comes off and and it has to be processed. The other part of the sludge is biology in the back of the plant, which was on the other slide way at the top, the aeration basin. Those are the bugs that eat the nutrients. Our biosolids numbers, if anything, they've gone up this past year. Our our production of biosolids, our our removal of biosolids has been a lot higher than it has in past. Years. We're taking a little bit different management approach to how we. Kind of cultivate, it's almost like a farm, you're cultivating these these bugs. You're feeding them nutrients, you're removing some of them and then you're putting some back and you're keeping that aeration tank of like a. Like you would a farm. And you're managing that population. So we've we've changed how we manage that population to a bit more of a technical approach that's. Done through testing and all sorts of other types of calculations that go into that management style and as a result, we've had more removals than we typically would.
How many ton a year right now of sludge do we have?
Seventy-six hundred tons, I believe, right around there, plus or minus.
And that number's been the same?
Pretty much, yeah. And it 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 really depends, you go a point or two on our current system, which is to run all that sludge through a press. Which is still in this project, it's just press one, one new press and moving both presses to a different location. You could, one or two points in percentage solids makes a big difference on tons, but right now out of seventy-six hundred tons. The vast majority of it's water. So we're paying eighty percent of of every dollar we spend for Casella to put that sludge in the landfill. Is water. Twenty percent solid.
So right now, just for round numbers, you're talking fifty million?
Fifty-eight. Say sixty.
Are there any numbers to say in ten years, we're gonna have to put fifteen million into it to keep it going?
Yeah, and I gave you those those numbers earlier. So in nineteen ninety-five, we spent fifty ninety million dollars in today's dollars on on this facility. Every thirty years, you're gonna be spending. Fifty, sixty, seventy million to continue to keep up with the aging infrastructure.
Right, but you're saying thirty years. I'm saying ten years.
Oh, in ten years?
I mean, is there a?
Roofs, you know, roofs last twenty years, so we've already replaced our roofs ten, ten years ago. So in ten years, we're gonna need to replace roofs with the equipment that we're putting in. All of that will have to be touched probably and maintained and, you know, continued continual maintenance on an annual basis.
So when we say fifty million, it's not for thirty years. I mean, there's gonna be more added to the fifty million or no?
Not for this, not for this project, but yes, there will, there's certainly gonna be other projects and that's, that's, that's what I'm talking about with. The the collection system. We've got at least, you know, another twenty million, probably more that should get spent within the collection system. At the plant itself, sure, you know, we're we're not replacing every, every component. You know, pipes, this is a corrosive environment, you know, pipes that they come and we install them, they're glass lined, but those glass lined pipes even. Degrate quicker than you would think that they should. Yeah?
I totally get it. You're trying to look to the future to solve the problem now for the future. What are other towns that don't have money? I mean, what are they doing? They just going broke, getting rid of sludge?
Oh, it's a good, good question. And I I asked Eric that same question to kind of look at. Other communities in and around our our region and and wastewater treatment plant that own and operate wastewater treatment plants. I don't have the data, but Eric, do you have some of that? Information on what other people around us are doing?
There it it's, there's a wide variation of where people are and where they're going. But I would say in the northeast, so all the northeast states, the storyline is around the same. Landfills are closing. And prices of disposal are escalating. And so some communities are fortunate enough to have infrastructure in place where they can just do a small bolt-on and dramatically. Decrease costs. In these numbers, you're seeing wastewater treatment plant upgrades that need to happen no matter what. And then a small percentage of that is that. Dryer that Seth is talking about. So they're doing the same economic analysis that you guys are and and then for economies of scale, either including it. And if they're in the same cycle that you guys are, which is the last one was done in the nineties, for economies of scale, they're including it. With all their other bu- with all their other wastewater treatment plant upgrades. If they're already a brand-new plant and don't, you know, aren't thirty years into infrastructure. Then they're doing the bolt-on and they're doing the same sorts of analysis that you guys are. There it's, it's it's extremely prevalent across all New York and all the New England states. And I'd say as part of, across the country. Same, it's just the marketplace pressures are slightly different. Sometimes people can't do land disposal because of PFAS regulations. Sometimes it's landfills closing. Other times, it's getting out, getting the stuff out of the cities, like like New York City, for example. They they put the stuff on trains and carted it down to Alabama and Ohio to get rid of it right now. And they're going through a complete diversification program considering. You know, digestion systems, drying systems and other things of that nature to de-risk themselves from these escalating costs.
Just a hypothetical question. What would happen in five years if a private contractor built one of these and started taking the sludge? Would it knock us out of the box? Could they do it cheaper than we could do it? Would surrounding towns go to this private contractor? Is it happening?
I have been, so that's an incredible question and a and a long history that I'll try to sum up. No one's doing it yet because of and and a lot of money is attempting to figure it out and no one can figure it out because. There's so many risks in it with regulations that private entities have not, they they charge you an arm and a leg to take it because they have to take the risk of them getting rid of it. Even within my company, we've attempted to partner with some of these people to try to figure that solution out, find a piece of land, find the. The right technology, get the right cost points, then operate it all. In the nor- nowhere in the, nowhere in the northeast has that right now. I'm trying to think if there's anywhere in the country. I I can't even think of a scale one in the country.
That's right, that's right. I was just trying to.
Yeah, it's it's an, I if I had the solution, I'd, yeah. It's a, it's a, it's a hard nut to crack and it's it's because of the risk of the regulations. And it's also because. So that's number one. And number two is the the transportation costs, like collecting all this and bringing it to places. You have to have like. Like we we looked at one in Albany and like you should try to, you at least have some economies of scale there. You need to get a big economy of scale to make it work. It's an excellent question.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Couple of things. You know, obviously, this is a large price tag. We, we've established that. It's become a larger price tag. We established that tonight. But, you know, as Counselor Cuddy said, I will support this. I, first of all, don't think we have a choice. If you look at all the data that you've provided with us, I think that we have an obligation in addition to that, to act environmentally compliant and sound. I mean, if we're concerned about our water coming from Owasko Lake and it being polluted, we have the same obligations downriver from us. And, you know, I think that we've established that, that's something that we value and that this is part of that process. In addition, that we have to be compliant with, with DEC regulations. And as we know, as Mr. Talbot explained to us over the last couple of weeks of the landfill, those are ever-changing, ever-evolving. And really, your job, his job are to try to stay in front of those. And to have us act in a proactive manner rather than a reactive. I really think this is what this amounts to. The other thing is, you know, and, and the manager spoke about it tonight, the services that we provide, the services that people come to rely on. And you talked about additional upgrades that need to be done, both at the wastewater treatment plant, trying to address eye and eye throughout the entire system. You know, you and I stood in the homeowner and, and three homeowners' lawns this summer. If I had to guess, those homes are assessed at probably a quarter of a million dollars each, and they had three feet of water in their basement because our system can't handle the amount of rain that we're getting. We can't just ignore that. We, we have to address those things. Do they come with a high price tag? Absolutely. I, I don't know that it's accurate to say we don't have the money, right? Because this isn't coming from the tax base, it's not coming from property taxes, it's not coming from the general fund, it's coming from, from the sewer fund. And you've established that that is very stable. You showed it in your slide that we can do this. We've got debt coming off the books. We're reinvesting in, in these facilities and that we can do that on a stable basis. On that topic, when, when is the last time there was a sewer rate increase?
We looked that up and I couldn't find records. In the nineties at some point, I think, or I, I don't know. I, I couldn't find the reference that showed what that four, the four dollars and seventy-eight per hundred cubic foot.
So that sewer rate has been stable this?
It's been there for a long time, yeah.
Paid off a thirty-year, or getting ready to pay off a thirty-year investment. And we'll be taking on another one. And you're showing minimal increases towards the end of this decade.
And this is worse, this is my worst-case build-out at this point, too. No, no loans, no grants, no, you know, no financial assistance.
And it was mentioned, the billions of dollars of infrastructure money that, that is going, we know that's going to be available. Here, we have a shovel-ready project addressing environmental issues that we know are coming down the pike. So the other question I have, you showed a slide here, two thousand seventeen, we were paying three hundred and eighty thousand dollars for sludge removal. Two thousand twenty-one, we're paying seven hundred and fifty thousand. It's a forty percent increase. You're forecasting that if we were to continue doing it the way we're doing it, that's saying if the DEC allowed us to continue to do it this way.
That's correct.
We'd be paying one point six million to four million dollars a year. Does, does that cost go away if we do the project?
That does. Biosolids, there's always gonna be a cost to doing business, though, right? I mean, but we, we will not have to dispose of our biosolids the way that we are right now. Even if the dryer's down for an extended period of time, the pre-treatment processes that we're contemplating here will have like a forty percent volume reduction, so forty percent loss in, you know, what we're putting out right now. And it will be a stabilized sludge. It'll be a, at least a, something that's a bit more acceptable or accepted from an environmental standpoint to be hauled and taken to a, to a treatment facility of some sort.
You know, I had a coworker with the last time that we talked about this, and there was, there was an article in the paper, talk about, you know, the price tag, wow, that's really expensive, why are we doing this? And the best analogy I could come up with is, you know, you're buying a house and interest rates are two percent, right? And you fix, you get fixed mortgage because they're two percent. And you know what your cost is gonna be. The other option is having that variable mortgage rate. You never know what your interest rate is gonna be. It could be two percent this year, it could be twenty percent next year. This current method is that variable interest rate is far enough.
Right.
And we're taking a lot of risk if we were to continue to do that. So, you know, I know it's a big price tag. You know, the other question I think I would ask in terms of construction, I see, you know, you're forecasting costs are going up. It's all over the news today that inflation was seven percent twenty-twenty-one, but what they're seeing is each month it's starting to decrease. And if that continued, and what they're forecasting is probably second half of twenty-twenty-two, those inflation rates are gonna start dropping. If that happens, do, is it possible that the price tag of this project also drops with, with those lower inflation rates, just like it's increasing with, with the higher inflation rates?
Yeah, it's hard to predict right now because it's just going up and down a significant amount. But yeah, so there's always that, that potential for sure.
I would think by adding the other treatment plant upgrades into this whole package, we're now creating a document that's going to attract more competition from potentially across the Northeast, right? Where, you know, as you, as you build up a larger project, more and more people may say, you know what, I'm gonna take the time to bid that. So there's a chance we get a better turnout, bid day with a more complex project.
Thank you both.
Yeah, I had a couple of other slides on there, but I, I think we'll just kind of skip. We're hoping to, you know, bid this thing out in August of this year, so later this summer. We'll be back here next week with a change order resolution for the engineering contract. And we'll be incorporating these modifications and honing in on cost estimates as, as the design continues to progress and get closer to that hundred percent. They'll get more and more resolution to be able to come back and, and provide an update on, on where we are before going out to formal bid. Okay?
No, I, I don't have anything to add. Just want to thank you for your informative questions and answers.
When, when you started out this evening, you mentioned the year nineteen twenty-nine. And what was the significance to that? I didn't catch all of it.
I don't know. That's.
I did.
That's when the, that's kind of when the original plant, the, the original wastewater treatment plant was kind of centralized to that location. Before that, there were a few other remote plants, you know, where our storage and release facility is now, behind Walmart. I've been told at one point, there was a small wastewater treatment plant there that probably just did very rudimentary settling and then discharged to, to the, to the stream that runs through there.
Nineteen twenty-nine caught my ear. My grandfather was elected to council the first time nineteen thirty-two. So what are we, ninety years later and we're still talking basically the same thing? So more things, time, was it gonna more things change or they stay the same or something like that? So?
Yeah, blank, blank, blank doesn't change, you know?
Water comes in the top, goes out the bottom, right? Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Council.
Discussion of rules and procedures for city council. Mr. Mason, please.
Thanks, Mayor. According to the council rules and procedures, every two years when there's a new council sat, we take a look at the, the rules and procedures that the council uses to conduct its business. And so tonight, the draft document is on the agenda for everybody to see. We will be bringing it back in front of the council next week for the council to give its approval. But it's, the draft document is in your packet tonight. It's been presented with very, very minimal changes. I will just kind of run through some of the changes that were put in there. Right on page one, we just changed the language so that it just states that the council will meet on the first four Thursdays of each month, taking out the language pertaining to the fifth Thursdays. We've pretty much been in a routine for the last several years of just adding up, canceling one of the meetings when the month has five Thursdays. So this will help to just get us on that, keep us on that fourth Thursday a month schedule. On page four, under the work session meetings, we just changed the language slightly to, as time goes on every year, there's always reasons that pop up over the course of a year why I, we try to stick with our business meeting agenda where we vote on things in a work session meeting like tonight, where we present things through presentations. But there's always times throughout the year that the city manager might need to bring a resolution before the council. So we've basically just modified the language in that paragraph for the work session meetings to leave it up to the discretion of the city manager if he does need to bring a resolution before the council at a work session meeting. And then on the page pertaining to the public to be heard section, on page seven, we just clarified the language so that it was very clear that the public has the opportunity to speak at one public to be heard section of the council meeting. Each individual would have the opportunity to speak either at the public to be heard session, which goes first in the meeting, or the public rehearsed, be heard section, which goes second at the end of the meeting. Other than that, the document remains intact. It's a, it's a document that's really been written over the many years of the council. I think this probably dates back to the nineteen nineties when it was originally kind of started and as councils have gone along. And there's been different various makeups to council and stuff. Some rules have been added, some rules have been taken away. But I, you know, for the last several years, we've kind of used this, basically the, about ninety-nine percent of the framework of this rules and procedures, and it's served the council very well. So it's basically presented intact with those minor changes to you tonight. And we will be bringing it back for approval next week. And if the council has any input that they would like to discuss now or just let us know. And if not, we'll have it back before you next week so that it can be approved and becomes the official document for the next couple of years.
Yes, clerk, just, so the, the change about bringing forward a resolution on a work session, is that only the discretion of the city manager or can council, like if there's some, I guess ceremonial proclamation, ceremonial resolution or something that is time-sensitive? Can the council, can a council member still bring something forth on a?
Yep.
Okay.
And, and, you know, basically communicating with the manager.
The city manager, okay.
It'll be up to the discretion of the manager with the consent of the council.
Okay, very good. And this will be on next week?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anyone else in regards to this?
All set. Thank you.
Second public to be heard?
Oh, before.
Counselor, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Before public to be heard, can I bring up the resolution I've been working on over the week? This was the resolution prompted by an email from Michelle Wonderlick, who is part of the environmental, works for the county for the environmental department with Eileen O'Connor. And there was a email that, that indicated that the three oh three D list is up for public comment. And Owasko Lake is, and has been in the past, or the tributaries inlet of Owasko Lake is on the three oh, three oh three D list. And the lake itself is on the three oh three D list, but it's requiring verification. And what I'm hoping to do is to make the lake and its tributaries a priority on the three oh three D list to develop, adopt, and implement a total maximum daily load. This, I handed out to you earlier today, was emailed along with the previous listing draft, some previous list, three oh three D list drafts, as well as final lists. This kind of goes over the, what's happened over the past few years, specifically dealing with harmful algal blooms. And basically, what we're trying to do is have the state follow the law and advocate for our lake to, to get the attention and resources it needs. We know how scary it was back in the fall of two thousand sixteen when these microsystems got into our drinking water. So, you know, this is, you know, one of the things we need to protect most is our lake. So that, that, this is what this resolution is, is trying to do, the source of our drinking water. And, you know, I hope I can earn the support of my colleagues next week for this resolution. If you have any questions, I, I did send an email with this and some supplementary, supplementary information. That information will be hopefully included in the background information next week on the agenda as well. So we can look at, if, if those, anyone wants to look at how we've been listed in the past and what's changed and, you know, go from there. But I just wanted to introduce us this week.
So Counselor, you're not, you're not asking for council support at this meeting? This is, this is for us to review, staff to review for next week?
Yeah, for next week, yeah. So, so, you know, well, I, I, I hope it can get on the, the resolution, the resolution next week because what is time-sensitive is that the, there is a comment period. And I think a resolution from this council being submitted into the comment period for the three oh three D list, I think would be very, would be important and profound as a, as a council to do that. So, so yes, anything over the week, any questions? And we can discuss further on the floor next week and hopefully vote on it next week.
Mr. Veiger, Corporation Council, City Clerk, can we move forward with this on next week's agenda?
So we'll have to have it in by tomorrow afternoon. So we've got it in draft form.
Yeah, I emailed. If there's any quirks, one thing I did know was a typo on my part. It should read two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. I was, got two, twenty-two in the brain, so. But that's, that's all I could find. If there's any other issues, please let me know.
I just have one question.
Yes.
In reviewing it, I mean, you refer to the U.S. Clean Water Act.
Yes.
Should we also be referring to the recent referendum that passed in New York State ensuring every citizen in New York State has a right to clean air and clean water?
I think, yeah, I mean, I think that would be good. If we were to include that, that would be a good place to include. That would be, one, two, three, four, five, six, right after, after the sixth paragraph. And I could, I could draft that. I just need to find the name of the referendum to refer to, go from there. Thank you, Counselor Giannettino.
Thank you.
So the one in the last election. I'll, I'll find the name and we'll include that.
So Counselor Cuddy, you're gonna work with staff?
Yeah, I'll work, if, if it's okay. Corporation Council, do you want to work on that tomorrow? With me?
I would, I would love to.
Okay, great. Thank you. Because I know it needs to be on the agenda for tomorrow. Great, thank you. That's, that's it, Mayor.
Any other business, Counselors? Well, second public to be heard. Mr. Mason's writing, so we'll give him the second. Mr. Mason's writing, so we'll give him the second. Is there anyone desiring to be heard, second public to be heard this evening? Very well, close that. We have a request for executive session.
Mayor, a very brief update that's covered under a matter of attorney-client protection.
Counselors, keep in mind, he said very brief. All right, so. We have, we have a sponsor, Executive Counselor Genetino, second by Counselor Cuddy. We call the wolf for executive session.
Executive session at 6:10 PM. Counselor Kent? Counselor Genetino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Mayor, please.
Aye. Will we recess our executive session?